February eleventh, twenty nineteen, town council meeting to order and the first order of business is the invocation and the pledge.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, thank you for the safety and comfort of our meeting room today, God. Thank you for the safety of all of us being able to gather here in freedom. We ask that you be with us to make wise and just decisions in the life of our town. Please be with those who are suffering or hurting and help us to do good in our community. In your son Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. And Terry, you will lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got quite a few guests with us today, so appreciate that. And Commissioner Hugt, appreciate you coming out to join us this afternoon, so thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get to the agenda here, and everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from January fourteenth. Any corrections, additions? Comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as submitted for the January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so it is January fifteenth, correct?
Because we had a snow day.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, gotcha.
The agenda says fourteenth, but it's actually the fifteenth. And speaking of agenda, well, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Speaking of the agenda, we did have, this is an amended agenda which went out to all the
Media.
Medias, but this is different from the original that went out.
And you all had a copy in your box?
Yeah, you all have copies.
In email.
Okay. Rebecca, treasurer's report, please.
Okay, you can go over a few things in your council packet. During the month of January, I did transfer three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the operating account. There was a large P and R debt service payment due February first, so that was required. We are fifty-nine percent through the budget year. I can tell you that new construction property tax was billed at the end of January. There were twenty-six accounts, which yielded about forty-seven hundred dollars worth of revenue, and that is reflected on your current report. Update on accommodation tax. I can probably with certainty say that that will come in at zero dollars this year. You're getting an update that the hotel is now not operating, and we're not quite sure when it will begin operating again. Another item on my agenda before I move on is for the council to approve procurement of a server replacement. And our network server is no longer being supported by Microsoft for the version that operates. We do have a contracted IT provider, and that provider was selected under a competitive bid process two years ago. It didn't specify hardware pricing, so every time we need hardware pricing, they do supply a contracted price for that. So this is outside the normal procurement process, which would normally require sealed written bids. It's over five thousand dollars. So I'm asking that the council approve this server replacement with the current IT vendor in the amount, it's in your packet there, seven thousand
Seven seventy-five.
Seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that would be the hardware procurement. We've also talked about going to a cloud-based backup system. And what I would also like the council to approve is that in conjunction with this server replacement, our tape backup option will go away, and then we would contract on a monthly basis for Just Tech to provide that IT cloud-based backup option. So obviously for F one nineteen, we would have only three to four months of that service. The full year would be incorporated into the next year's budget process when we start that.
Is there a dual backup system that we could look into that would, is this so in addition to the cloud, we could have something?
We have an onsite external hard drive backup.
And that will, that will continue?
Yes.
Any other questions for Rebecca? On the, either the reports or on the server?
Did we look at any other provider or pricing for this?
For the hardware? No.
One of the reasons we've been to IT services previously, to get someone who would consistently know our system and be able to know what kind of, and they were supposed to be making recommendations. And Rebecca had done a lot of it for, over the years, and she just didn't have the time anymore. So we got a company a couple of years ago through competitive bid that would be able to, be able to know our system and make recommendations. So really, that was the intention, is to be able to not have to go outside of them.
How long is that contract good for?
Um, I think that for three years, I don't
I don't, I don't have to go back.
I don't have it written on, but it was at least a three-year bin.
Okay.
We have struggled regularly keeping qualified IT providers on staff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We've been through many, and so we've, we've asked a lot of this company, and so far, I think we're generally happy. Sometimes the timing of when things happen aren't necessarily when we would like them to happen, but they know our network environment at this point. They can dial in. They don't have to come onsite necessarily for everything that we have to have done. They keep our virus protection up to date. So at this point, I feel comfortable that, you know, they're giving us fair pricing and fair service, which is somehow it's been hard to get.
And the cloud backup will protect us against ransomware too, won't it?
Well, I don't know all the technicalities of what they're doing behind the scenes, but they're supposed to be applying patches whenever they're needed remotely. So they're monitoring all of our workstations and server with whatever protection is needed. They're also in the process of providing me what are the policies and procedures for their data forms to include security and disaster recovery. So I'll have all that on file too as well, to get comfortable that this cloud backup isn't sitting just one little computer in their office.
So if we go to cloud, we don't also have to buy this tape backup device, the eighteen hundred dollar?
That's correct.
Gotcha. So it's saving that, and then it's a little more annually, but.
Plus, I'm sure the server's encrypted, so more secure.
Is this a budgeted expense?
It was budgeted at ten thousand dollars.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. It says it right there.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
So we're looking for action on this today, if anyone, we care to make a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of the server replacement from Just Tech, the town IT provider, in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And to transition from a tape backup to a cloud-based backup through Just Tech as well.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
And I would like to spend a few minutes to talk about the other material that I put in your packet with regard to the contract extension for the trash collection. And just to summarize, last year, our contracted provider was purchased. So Affordable Refuge and Recycling now is owned by Good Companies, and they have been providing the service since last year, under the same contract terms that existed. That contract expires June thirtieth of nineteen, so this is the time of year when we would negotiate an extension. And the contract does allow for two, two-year extensions. So I have had a meeting with the contractor, and in your packet, I supplied the requested pricing that they would like to take effect on July first of this year. It would be for the two-year extension, but the contract does call for an escalation on July first of two thousand and twenty. And that would be tied to the February two thousand and twenty CPI. So the pricing you have there would be in effect for one year. I also provided a worksheet that shows you the comparison between what this same contractor was charging us in June of two thousand and fourteen. They lost the bid subsequently, and now compared to what they're requesting July first of nineteen. And most of the changes have to do in the recycling components of all those services. The residential and most of the commercial customers had very small changes in what those per-unit prices are compared to five years ago. So ultimately, for this window of time, we were able to decrease residential pricing by twenty-three percent and commercial pricing by thirty-four percent in the last five years.
So you'll be looking, bring this to us next month for?
Right. So what you'll see there is that my initial estimate of what the effect for customers would be is around nineteen percent increase for residential, a twenty-seven to thirty-seven percent increase for commercial, depending on the level of service, and a twenty-five to forty-four percent increase in recycling. And that's just a product of the recycling environment now and how much more it costs to handle those materials. And some materials don't have markets anymore. So that's totally seen in the price that they are requesting. So between now and the March meeting, obviously, you can take an opportunity to look at that. I would like to bring to the council for approval or denial the two-year contract extension at the March council meeting.
And just as a background, what last, when we put it out, it actually reduced by, what, twenty percent?
Twenty-three percent for residential and thirty-four percent.
So basically, we're back, going to be back to where we were five years ago. And the CPI is standard in our contracts, right?
Yes. So a couple of other things to let you know I'm working on. I have received twenty-six requests for fiscal note response from the legislature this year. I've done eighteen. I have eight more to go. I'm going to be working on the audit RFP because that definitely has to go out before year-end. I'm shooting for council to approve that in May. Working on the water impact fee study and adjustment, and also the budget cycle.
Quite a bit going on. Anything else for Rebecca? Thank you very much. Okay, Jada, planning and zoning, please.
Your last planning and zoning meeting was held January the twenty-second. It was held on a Tuesday due to the holiday. There was only one item on the agenda, and that was the shops at McIntosh on Point Lookout Road. That request for a final site plan was approved. Currently, there's no meetings for the February agenda, so the next meeting will not be held until Monday, March eighth.
Okay. Any questions for Jada? Thank you very much. Next, we have Sergeant Moses with us. Do you have any updates for us, or?
No updates. All has been quiet.
Things have been quiet, which is good, so.
I'm taking these with me.
Yes.
All is good.
Any questions for Sergeant Moses? Okay. Sergeant, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming to see us this afternoon with, out of report, which is good. Okay, Michelle, administrator's report, please.
We have three liquor license letter of support requests. The first is for Lenartown Wine and Spirits. Mr. Malak Singh is purchasing Gunther's Fine Wine and Spirits located at two five four seven oh Point Lookout Road, Unit B. They're requesting a Class A package store license, and they're going to be abandoning the bistro restaurant license that Mrs. Gunther also had in the same location. So they had an A license for the package store. She also had the restaurant and a portion of it, but they're abandoning that. So I did not invite them. I didn't figure there would be any questions. They're going to continue to run the package store business like they do today, and are just requesting a liquor license letter of support for the Class A.
Okay, any questions? If not, like to see action taken on this. Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to send the liquor license letter of support for Class A package store for Lenartown Wine and Spirits located at two five four seven zero Point Lookout Road, Unit B.
Motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is for Action Lounge and Billiards LLC, and we do have some representatives here today. Since it's a new business, I thought you might like to hear what they're proposing. So we have Mr. Charles Mattingly, Ms. Jeannie Sweet, and Matt Sweet.
Yes, how you doing?
Good.
Great.
Yeah, we're looking to open an upscale billiards hall down here, Unit F, in the same shopping center as two five four seven zero, Unit F. What we're looking to do is hold a nice upscale billiards room to complement leagues. There's a lot of Southern Maryland pool leagues currently playing a lot of the bars. We're looking to try and move it to a little bit more upscale unit place and provide food and beverages, and also during the daytime, you know, be able to have kids and entertain kids. Full, billiards is getting to be a very big sport again. We're actually going to add it to the Olympics, the next coming Olympics, which is kind of big, so.
Sure.
We're looking to do big things this time.
And you're looking to host tournaments and stuff?
Absolutely. Tournaments, leagues. I'm an avid pool player myself, and I've spent thirty years doing pool table work. I set up pool tables all around the county and out of the county, and we currently live in the county also, so we're excited about it. You guys are too.
So you're looking at bringing in visitors from all over the, not just Southern Maryland, but?
Global.
Yeah, east coast.
I've actually got a lot of contacts with people on other countries, and we look to actually have them come in and do some exhibition matches here. And Philippines is one of the countries that are really known for pool. And we've already got two major Filipino players that if we get open, they're going to probably do a big exhibition here immediately, so we're excited about that.
Good.
They're friends of mine, actually, so that's good.
Great. Looking forward to it, so. Any questions?
So what you're applying for is a Class B?
Yeah, a Class B restaurant.
Now, are you going to have, have you had discussions with the liquor, with Tammy over at the liquor board, and she's, she's good with the Class B?
Yes, we've completely filled out that application, working well with her, and we have that to be turned in on the fifteenth.
Okay.
So we're trying to go through all the steps at the same time.
Because you, you're, for the Class B, you have to have fifty percent alcohol, fifty percent food sales, so that's good?
Yep. Playing on a seven-to-seven appetizer meal, we've been working on that. One of the partners is currently a manager of a restaurant, so we feel pretty confident we can make that work.
Okay, good. When Charlie and I first started talking, I guess you were talking about bringing in food from somewhere else, but you're going to have your own? Okay, good. I was just concerned that you wouldn't meet the liquor board's criteria, so. Good, great. Any further?
When, when are you expecting to be open?
Well, you know, a lot depends on the approvals and how long it takes to get a liquor license and zoning and everything like that. We'd love to be open by June, but September, October would be, billiards is typically more of a fall. Summer's not as attractive to it, so if we could get open by then, that'd be great, but June would be awesome, so we'll see how that all goes with paper.
Great, well, you'll be dealing with Jada at here.
Yes. I was listening to her earlier.
The zoning, so, so, no, good luck, so. Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to send a liquor license letter of support for a liquor license for Action Lounge and Billiards LLC. The business is located at two five four seven zero Point Lookout Road, Unit F.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much.
I'll have the letter ready tomorrow. You can pick it up.
Looking forward to it.
A very second.
Good.
Okay, the final liquor license letter of support is for new owners of Wine and Design located on Fenwick Street, four one six one oh Fenwick Street. The business currently has a Class D, which is a tavern license, because we did not have the A and E license whenever they originally opened the business. But the new owners, Anne Ryan and Laurie Wassink, are applying for an A and E license, which is more appropriate for that business now that we have that available to them. And so they're just requesting the arts and entertainment license.
What's the difference between the A and E license and?
Well, the A and E is limited. It's the new license we got a couple of years ago, which is specifically for galleries and art-related businesses. It limits the alcohol consumption. They can serve two glasses of wine and two beers. Whereas a tavern license, really, we had hesitation in issuing the tavern license originally, but that was the only one that they could qualify for. But it was really more licensed than they really needed. So now that the A and E license is available, that's definitely more appropriate for them.
Little more restrictive and not, can't turn it into a tavern without us approving it.
Yeah, that was the main concern before, is giving out the tavern license, and then if they sell the business, you know, transferring the license, so, to become an actual tavern. But this way, it's, the gallery license is really the best license for them.
The two ladies that are taking over, have they been working there for?
Um, no, I don't believe so. They're customers, though.
Okay.
And I, I've talked to both of them. They're very excited about it.
Good. I know it's, store's doing very well, but they?
I think this is their third one they're selling, so they just want to try some new endeavors, but they've already sold Annapolis and North Beach, I believe.
Right. Care to make a motion, or have other questions?
I move to send a letter of support for an arts and entertainment liquor license for Wine and Design, trading as Grateful Artist of Southern Maryland LLC, Laurie Wassink.
I second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And y'all don't need to stick around for the rest of this meeting.
You're welcome. You're hostage, you have to stay.
The next item is the, just the introduction of ordinance number one eighty-nine, our public ethics ordinance. This is adding provisions to chapter nine of our ethics code of the town of Lenartown as required by the Public Integrity Act of two thousand and seventeen. Action would be taken at next month's meeting. There is a copy of our current ordinance in your packet, and underlined and bold are the revisions that are being required, state mandated. Our attorney, excuse me, our attorney had contacted us and said that these revisions need to be, are required to be done, so he updated the ordinance. And so this is just for introduction. You can read through that, and next month, we will take action on that. Any questions on? The next item is resolution one dash nineteen, adoption of the downtown strategic plan. As you know, we've gone through a, over a year-long process with updating our downtown plan. We were, we hired a consultant to update our nineteen ninety-nine downtown plan and to actually make it an economics development strategic plan. In September, we held three days of stakeholder meetings with many, many people coming and talking about it with the consultants. Mahan Riechel are the consultants. And following that, in the end of November, they brought back the draft report and did a presentation once again to a large audience. They also did a presentation to you all, reviewing the draft findings. We have now received the draft, the final report, which will be available on our website after you adopt it today. We, we are doing this by resolution. It is a working document. I'll read through the resolution in just a minute. We also would like to bring forward a working group. We do have some members here today that have worked on this hard with us, the county's economic development department, Chris Castlemus and Catherine Stormont. And they've, and Bennett Wilson from your department has actually worked with us as well. They, month after month, we've met. They've been very involved in it. I think Chris might want to add a few words to that.
Sure. Again, Chris Castlemus, economic development director for St. Louis County. Downtown Lenartown is very important for us in terms of attracting businesses, attracting young talent to the area. As Michelle says, we were close to the town, trying to meet at least monthly with the town administrator and the mayor, just to see how we can support their efforts and continuing the redevelopment of downtown Lenartown. So we encourage them, supported the idea of putting this plan together. Thought the timing was right. There's new players in the downtown area, these stakeholders, so they selected Mayor Michael, a great consultant, great choice. This is a fantastic plan. It's really well done. It's got a lot of great ideas in it, so we do support it. The idea of having a steering committee, or I'm not sure what you call it.
Yeah, steering committee.
It's a good idea, just to make sure you take these ideas and have a group that's a little bit wider than just the town, maybe reach out to other areas of the county and get some buy-in and help to move some of these recommendations to actual implementation, so I think it's a great idea. Again, big supporter. A lot of great ideas. I think they did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your support, the ideas that you, you presented to us also, so, no, thank you.
Thank you for your work. I'm hoping as we move forward next year with our comprehensive plan, that you can continue, or that we'll be able to at least incorporate this into our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
So hopefully you've had a chance to look through it. I did give you a hard copy as well. I sent you the link to it. On page eight, the, what do they call this, the executive summary, was thirteen recommendations and strategy. We feel like the rebranding and the wayfinding signage kind of go hand in hand, and we hope to move that forward sooner versus later. Also, the, some minor improvements in landscaping, things that we can do to make the square more functional on a day-to-day basis, as their plan recommended, as well as some alley network improvements, which we think will be minor. So we are working on, kind of working those plans into the budget cycle that we're getting ready to work on, and also aggressively look for grants to help with that. Also, the retail recruitment. This working group, we feel like will be really beneficial in that area. And I did list the names in your packet, what we were recommending for this group, and that they, they would actually look at the strategic, how we put this into place, and send back recommendation as far as priorities and things, and report back to you all as the final decision-makers. But Chris and Catherine and Bennett would also, I think, continue to work on that group, or at least some of them. Dan and myself, and then Jason All with the tourism, and he's also vice chair of the marketing committee. We were recommending, and we have not talked to these people yet, but after tonight, we would try to put this meet, this group together and get a meeting pretty soon. We were looking for someone from the developer community, possibly Wendy Guadagnoli with Rainbow Construction. Tom Watts, Lexington Park, I think Chris has already talked with him, and he's, has a really good background in redevelopment and kind of something, someone from the, a little bit from the outside, not the same people that are always working on things here in town and really understands small towns and redevelopment. John Dietrich, who's the public works director in transportation, and he is also a resident at Lenartown War, so I think that would be a nice addition. And then Jeff Brown from our planning commission. We were going to ask him to serve on the committee. So like I said, this would kind of be a working group that would just kind of So like I said, this would kind of be a working group that would just kind of work on how we move this forward, and if you, you don't necessarily have to take formal action on that, but that's kind of what we recommended as the, as the committee. And, and then for today, to adopt the plan, we would be Resolution one dash nineteen. Whereas Lenartown is fast becoming a family-friendly, independent business and restaurant hub in St. Mary's County, and has benefited from sound planning. And whereas the Commissioners of Lenartown desire to continue sound planning to manage and guide investors, both public and private, to ensure a bright future of downtown Lenartown. Whereas in two thousand and eighteen, the Commissioners of Lenartown hired consultants, Mahan Riekel Associates, to update the nineteen ninety-nine downtown plan. And whereas the updated downtown strategic plan serves as a visionary document that shapes the future of downtown Lenartown. The scope of the plan includes both economic development strategies and urban design strategies. Now therefore be it resolved on this eleventh day of february twenty nineteen by the Commissioners of Lenartown. The Town of, Town of Lenartown Downtown Strategic Plan is hereby adopted as an official guidance tool for the Town of Lenartown. So that's really the only action, is to adopt Resolution one nineteen, unless you have comments?
Will some of the design standards from earlier plans continue?
From, like, the downtown plan?
For architecture.
Yes, because it was also just a, a guidelines, it wasn't necessarily a set-in-stone document. So certainly it's something that we still use, and we will continue to use. It was more specific to facade improvements and, you know, awnings and colors and that kind of thing. So we would, this document didn't necessarily take its place, but it's kind of another more broad-range document.
Comments, questions?
Just for the committee again, Michelle, you said that you have not made contact, but we're gonna do that, inform the committee, is that right?
Yeah, or just request if they would be willing to serve on it, not necessarily for a specific term, but just kind of as we're working through and bringing some of these ideas to the table, and what, what's the priority, and especially the retail recruitment packet, and trying to, to move that forward, and just have some other input, other than just the ones who've been working on it.
Thank you.
And one comment that Trip made during the presentations with Mahan Riekel is, you can bring these people to the table, you can set them up for success, but there's also a hundred reasons why people aren't successful, and businesses aren't successful also. So just kind of keep that in mind also, when, you know, when we do have businesses come in and don't, aren't successful, it's not because of what we're doing here in town, but there's, there's, I think Chris, you could probably back me up on this, there's so many other variables involved also. Okay? Any other questions or comments?
Let me say that the presentation that Mahan Riekel did was, was a good presentation.
We've heard from a lot of people who've seen a lot of these plans, that it's a really good plan, that they did a nice job. Very, there's some short-term goals that we can easily accomplish, some long-term strategies. I think we really definitely got our money's worth, and I'm really happy that we picked them as consultants. I, I would recommend that you, you know, read through it as you can, that's why we gave you the hard copy. It has a lot of good information, and like I said, we'll be bringing back suggestions and recommendations as we move forward.
Anyone care to make the...
I move to approve Resolution one dash nineteen, adoption of the downtown strategic plan as a guidance and tool for economic development of the downtown Lenartown.
I'll second.
Motion in second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your support. Okay, the next item is a letter of support request from the Lenartown Volunteer Fire Department. In your packet, I had given you a copy of the letter from the fire department. They have formed a committee to research their need for a fireboat and having a more rapid response as we are further developing the wharf. And they were requesting if they do move forward with a rescue boat, if they would be able to house it at the wharf at the slips and pier when we get those constructed. And also if we would support, give them letters of, a letter of support for them to go after grants, looking for money to purchase the boat if this committee recommends it to the larger fire department. So it's really just a letter of support in pursuit of the fireboat. As we are asking to further develop the wharf, possibly add a restaurant, have more boat traffic down there. They feel they have a need to actually have a boat that's there in the water, ready to go, you know, if there is an emergency.
And certainly, I mean, I think we should support the fire department with that. They do, they are aware that will not, there will not be electric hookup or water hookup at the pier itself, so.
I was gonna say, I think this is a good idea, because their activities at the wharf are only increasing as time goes on, so.
When they do have a, they have to bring a boat from another department, and I saw that boat get in an accident the last time they were on their way to a, to an accident, to a rescue. But, and they, they have difficulty getting it in, getting the boat in the water, and so it just will be a lot easier and a better response time if they're...
Plus the, the ramp, the temporary ramp that's there, I mean, they've got access to, it's, it's locked, but they've got the, the access to it. But hopefully eventually, that goes away when a restaurant goes in, so.
And this, this is locking us in a no funding, just being clear.
No, it's just a, a letter, I'll be careful how the word, the letter is worded, but it's really that if, that we support them, looking to purchase a boat, and we would offer letter of support if they were applying for a grant, and also that we would be open to the idea of them parking it at one of the slips. And just speaking of the slips, we did get our final Army Corps permit, we're ready to go with that. I got the, the ninety percent drawings last week, and we should be wrapping up the bid packets within the next couple of weeks. I've been working with Department of Natural Resources and the engineers to finalize those plans and getting that out to bid. So my goal is to get that out early March out of bid, so we're looking forward to that.
I think we can, I don't wanna speak the whole council, but certainly, I can support some pursuing funding for a fire boat. I think that's a good asset to the town. I, I question, I guess, in keeping it there permanently, as to whether it would send the wrong message with other boat traffic, other boaters as we requested the funding for the docks as commuter slips, not as, not for overnight stays, or for, certainly not for permanence.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know that necessarily, I mean, a lot of people would look at it opposite, they would think it's a security thing and feel comfortable that there was a boat down there. I think it would, you know, if it was a private boat or something, and we were allowing it to be there permanently. There certainly should be plenty of room, it's a pretty large pier. I mean, I guess if it gets to be a problem, we, we would need to address it, but I think most people would look at it as a safety and, and have a positive outlook on it.
No, we're allowing the fire department to be proactive, you know, through there, so.
Okay, any other comments? Care to make a motion?
I move to send a letter of support for LVFD in their pursuit of a fireboat for water rescues and further support, allowing the boat to be stored and docked at the new proposed slips at Lenartown Wharf for rapid response.
I'll second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two contracts that are up for renewal, just extension, they have options left on their contracts. The first is the Lenartown Street Sweeping Contract, which was publicly bid in the fall of two thousand and fifteen and was awarded to TNT Sweeping for three years, which actually expired November thirtieth, and we hadn't brought it forward yet. There were two one-year options that were remaining, and TNT is not requesting any revisions to the pricing, they would keep the pricing the same. Staff is recommending extending the contract for another year. We have not received any complaints on their service, they've, they've done the street, sweet, street sweeping for at least probably twenty years.
The previous contract was for three years?
When we bid it, we bid it for three years with two one-year extensions, so the three years, the first three years are up, and now we have two more one-year extensions.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't heard anything negative, I mean, it's all been positive, so...
No, they're very responsive if, if we need something, and they, they do come in for events a lot of times and kind of work around the event schedules.
Don't they even come in for the beach party, until they'll clean all the sand and everything? Yeah. All right, I move to extend the Lenartown Street Sweeping Contract with TNT Sweeping for an additional year, expiring November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
I second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is actually for the Event Portable Toilets. That contract was bid in January two thousand and seventeen. Before that, we were doing it on a year-to-year basis, but the last contract was for one year with two one-year extensions. We did, the first year was in two thousand and seventeen, we extended it for a year in January of two thousand and eighteen. So there's one extension that remains. TNT Portalets is the company that had gotten the last bid, and they have done a great job. They went out and bought a lot of new facilities and have really maintained them well, and are really good to work with on events. So we are also recommending extending that contract for a year.
And they're keeping the prices the same on this one as well?
Comments, questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to extend the Event Portable Toilet Contract for an additional year to TNT Sweeping and Portalet.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Last item on my agenda is the approval of a contract of sale for condo unit three oh one at four one six six oh Courthouse Drive. As you remember, we voted to sell unit three hundred previously, we haven't gone to closing, but I think maybe by the end of this month.
You gave them an extension, they were doing some further, just...
Design and...
Yeah, design, and trying to get the interior design for the tenant that they're bringing in, so, that should be close.
So the, the other unit sold for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand and netted, we're projected to net one hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and sixty from that. The offer on this condo, unit three oh one, and this is the condo that Bank of America is renting part of now, is one hundred and ninety-seven thousand and the, what we're projected to net, one eighty-two six sixty-four fifty. So very close to what we netted in the other condo. Also, we would no longer have the condo fees that we have quarterly, and we were thinking that this would sell a lot quicker. We do have the agent here that sold it.
Gordon Stalway is our realtor that brought us the contract, so. Any comments, Gordon?
Just that it's an all cash offer, and with your approval, we were going to ask for an additional deposit with that contract and try and speed up the closing date if possible. So I think it's a good all cash offer with no loan contingencies. Hopefully, purchase, proposed purchasers will accept the counteroffer to get the town that amount that's estimated moving forward.
And the, the only contingency is a fourteen-day period to do inspections for, you know, standard inspections, mold.
Yes.
HVAC, that kind of stuff, so nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. So if this is approved today, and they go through with their inspections this, this next month, we could come back next month and, and do the ordinance that, that's needed. You know, all the public hearings have been heard, so we don't have to go through that again, so. So we'd be able to settle on this fairly quickly.
And this one was about, was, was this a smaller one, I know I asked this last time, I forgot.
Slightly smaller, yes.
Slightly.
Yeah.
It, it did have a, a lower appraisal than the other one originally.
That's odd that we got a, a higher price for it.
I think it definitely helps having the renter in there.
Having, having the tenant, this, this is gonna be a, you know, investment for the, the buyer, so that's, that's what I think prompted most of their interest there, is their tenant there.
The other one's investment as well.
Yes.
So we would authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the sale. This month, we'll bring forward the ordinance that we have to do for disposal of public property next month, and we would be able to do that as an emergency ordinance, we would just bring it forward and pass it at next month's meeting, to be able to get to sale, to sale on time. We, we've held many public hearings during the process, there's been a lot of public input during this whole process, for the last three years, two years?
Yeah. Yes.
Any other questions for Gordon, or in general?
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and abstain from this.
Sure.
From this vote, since I have an interest in another condo.
All right, I move to authorize Mayor Burris to sign the contract for the sale of the condo unit three oh one at four one six six zero Courthouse Drive in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to Stephen and Paula Decker, and to move forward with the process for the final sale.
I second.
Motion in second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention?
Oh, I'm actually abstaining as well.
Okay, so two abstentions and three, four, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
That's all you've got, okay. Moving to my report, Commissioner Hughes, I guess, had to, has skipped out, but just wanted to thank him for coming, so please send that message to him, appreciate his support. The Maryland Mayors Association was a couple of weeks ago in Annapolis, and the one major issue for the legislator, legislation is the small cells that are coming to Maryland, the five G, which is, you know, this basically internet access. And the thing with is, the, the, going from four G, which we have now, to the five G, it's a smaller range, so you have to have a box just about every hundred feet. So in these neighborhoods that we've got, you know, you're going, you're talking up to a thousand of these boxes up on, you know, up in the air, one something in our right-of-way, so. MML and, and Mako is also pushing to have, for, for us to get an ordinance in place before this comes effective, which is coming from the FCC very quickly, so. We've talked to our attorney about it, he's done some ordinances for other towns, so we'll be bringing that forward here real soon. And it's, it's not that we're trying to stop it at all, but we just, it's about the aesthetics, we wanna make sure that it's...
There's some pictures in the MML bulletin.
Yeah, if you got your MML bulletin, this is, this is what they'll, they can look like. And again, these things have to be within a hundred feet of each other.
And some of the laws, you only have fourteen days to approve the application, they're pushing for stricter laws, well, they're actually pushing for fourteen days.
It's actually sixty, sixty, sixty-day shot clock is what they're calling it, we're, you know, we'll, once this goes into effect, we've got sixty days to put in an ordinance, so.
They're trying to change it, this legislative session, to fourteen days, so, I mean, it's just, it's gonna get harder and harder, and...
So it's not gonna come to us first, it'll be in the, in the urban areas first, but it'll be coming here real soon, so.
So our attorney sent sample legislation, I gave Jada the packet this morning, she's gonna start working on reviewing it as well and see how it would affect us and what, what we need to adopt. It's not that you can stop it... It's not that you can stop it, like Dan said, it's just having a little bit more control.
And we don't want to stop it, I mean, 'cause it, it is fast internet service and, you know, that's what we need, but, uh, but again, we wanna...
So, so what do we do if we don't, if we, I mean, will we not get five G if we don't have a chance?
No, we would get it, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to say where they need to be placed.
And what they look like.
Yeah.
So it would look like that.
So they can't use the existing towers?
Well, no, because they need to be a hundred feet apart, whereas current is about a thousand feet apart. So you're gonna need, it's gonna have to be on, depending on, like, our new neighborhoods don't have, um, poles, so they'd have to use our streetlights or something like that, or, or you can actually put them on houses even, so we need to have it.
Is it this?
Have it, yeah, it, it can be, it can be smaller, it can be larger, so, I mean, that's probably worst-case scenario there, but, uh... So anyway, I just wanted to make you aware, we need to get in front of this before, uh, before they get in front of us.
Do you know if they plan on using the existing infrastructure or trunk lines that are, that are there? Is this part of the new, the lines are there?
Well, they need the, the fiber needs to be there, but then, once they get to the fiber, that's when these things read off of each other, so you don't have the fiber. They need to be in the sightline so they can read each other, the boxes, so... So anyway, I just wanted to make, make you aware, that's, that's what's coming.
So we'll put together an ordinance that'll just say that they have to consult with us before they put a box up? Is that what we're doing, or...
Pretty much, yes.
Otherwise you lose control, 'cause if you don't have an ordinance in place, then they have that sixty-day window and they could just go do what they want. If you, you don't respond to them in that timeframe, um, they can basically enter your right-of-way. If you read that article, you should've gotten your magazine in your box, um, and it's pretty, um, pretty informational.
And like I said, MML and MAKO, Maryland Association of Counties are behind this, um, you know, trying to get, get out in front of this before FCC.
I know MML's been working hard for that.
Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, the facade improvement, uh, uh, program, you wanna talk about that?
Sure, um, so we adopted it last month, um, it is out and on the streets. Um, had a lot of good conversations with business owners. It's on our website, uh, we're also promoting it on Facebook. Um, I know, um, DECD is also promoting it on their Facebook. Um, so, uh, I think, well, it's May thirtieth is the deadline for the application, but we have it on the front of our website and then you click on it, it takes you to the application and we've, um, put it out on Facebook, different Facebook pages, so... Um, I think we also talked about it at LBA and, um, I had talked to several people who weren't LBA members who were interested. I made sure they got the information when it went out live, so, um, look forward to hopefully getting a lot of good requests for it.
When's, what's, when's the deadline?
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, yeah.
So, well, I mean, we have the fifty thousand to work with. If we don't get enough to use all that fifty thousand, then it would be on a rolling basis after that until it's used up.
And just to clarify, it's up to five thousand dollar matching grant for each business that wants to, uh, take advantage of it. The next thing is the Hamptons, I'm sure you all have seen that, that they are leasing spaces now. I know we've talked about this, but, uh, we did take a tour last, a couple of weeks ago and they all are, I mean, it's first-class operation. Uh, granite countertops, um, you know, the kitchens are, um, top-notch, all two and three-bedroom units. Uh, all have a balcony, um, the pool and clubhouse, the clubhouse is set up magnif- magnificently and, uh, the, even the restrooms in the clubhouse have Saunas in them, so it's, you know, very nice, all elevated. Uh, when you walk out of the elevator, no matter what floor you're on, there's a, um, like a lounge area, like you're walking into a hotel lobby, so... I think they're gonna be a, a big hit and the LBA is actually putting together, we're putting together, um, little gift packets, gift bags for each occupant, so that's what you, if you came in downstairs on the table, that's, we're putting those together and...
We've had a great response and it's not just flyers, it's gift certificates and coupons and really, really the business community stepped up. It's a really nice, uh, bag that we're doing, arts and entertainment bag, um, to welcome people to the community and try to introduce them and make them want to come downtown and shop and eat and all business.
And the only, uh, last thing I had was the Executive Inn and Suites Hotel. Uh, last Monday, the judge did sign off on the foreclosure, so, um, and the new owner has agreed to let Neil stay there until, I think, the twenty-first, when they, uh, actually go to settlement, so... After that, he's looking for an operator or will, if he doesn't find an operator, will, uh, put it up for auction himself, so... But hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll have a full operational hotel back in town, so...
I thought it was bought by somebody up in Baltimore.
Yes, yes.
And they're looking for an operator?
Yeah, he, he, they, this person that bought it, he and his partners, they don't operate hotels, they just go around and buy properties like this.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
So they're looking to bring like the Holiday Inn Inn to operate it, or just somebody off the street?
With that size hotel, I don't see a Holiday Inn going there, but, uh, yeah, I mean, he's, he is talking to different operators that, that will hopefully go in there, yeah. Okay, council reports, events, Tyler?
So, uh, thanks to Brandy and the rest of the staff for putting this together, but a lot's been going on. Uh, February's First Friday was held on February first with loving Leonard Town theme. Um, a lot of people came out and showed their love of Leonard Town by visiting the different restaurants and shops in town. Brandy, as I mentioned, is continuing planning for the spring and summer events by supplying information to new organizations and private parties, updating the town's website and then continually posting on websites such as Southern Maryland Governments, MEKO, Southern Maryland Online, and then Facebook. In addition, plans continue for the Earth Day celebration, which is on April fourteenth. Upcoming events, Friday, March first, first is the next First Friday, which is Youth Art, Art Month, and that's from five PM to eight PM. Saturdays, all March and April, there's Zumba around town at various locations between Shepherd's Old Field Market and the Wharf between eight-thirty and nine-thirty in the morning. Friday, April fifth is the First Friday Taste of Leonard Town theme, which is from five PM to eight PM. Saturday, April twentieth is the Coastal Arts Market at the Wharf from nine AM to three PM. And then April twenty-eighth is a car show on the square from eight AM to four PM. And thanks, Brandy, for all, all of these events coming up. I know that was taking a lot to coordinate.
The new calendar of events is out as well, we'll put some, one of your rods, but it'll be online and, um, started distributing it.
Brandy, anything else you want to add? I know you've got quite a bit going on from LBA and...
Right, um, well, actually, a, a big announcement is that we will partner with the LBA and, uh, and also with the, um, St. Mary's Arts Council to combine the Leonard Town Concert Series, the Summer Concert Series, and the Downtown Tunes Concert Series into one big, um, series that we're calling the Leonard Town Music, Summer Music Festival. And that's going to go from May eighteenth to September seventh. It'll kick off with a concert from a country current, um, maybe band, uh, in honor of Armed Forces Day on May eighteenth. Uh, and it'll go through to the Bush Woodstock Music Festival, um, at the Wharf on September seventh. And that coincides with the fiftieth anniversary of, um, Woodstock, Woodstock Music Festival. So we're excited to announce that, um, we have, uh, some really exciting bands coming. Uh, we have concerts planned for with Sipka and Sal, um, the Ryan Forster Band. Funzilla will be returning to Beach Party. Um, we also have Robbie Booth, uh, performing on August thirty-first. So we're really excited to launch this new series. Uh, we're also, um, working with the area restaurants to do a pre-order menus, um, so people can order, um, refreshments or even full meals and, and pick up tote bags. It's gonna be, we're branding the concert series, so the tote bags will have the concert series logo, uh, also room sponsor logos and, uh, the, the participating businesses will also be able to advertise as well. So we're really excited about moving forward with that. Um, and also we have a special, um, partnership, uh, we're working with the Potomac Jazz and Secret Festival. Uh, it's their twentieth anniversary of the event and they reached out to us to, um, to expand it to a full weekend. Um, so we are, we reached out to the businesses and it's really exciting how so many of them have come on board. Uh, we're launching on Friday with a, uh, Friday, July twelfth, with a concert in the square. Uh, it's gonna be a jazz era theme. Uh, we have the trio Higher Standards who's gonna perform and we have some fun things that we're planning for that evening as well. Um, and then there's gonna be after-parties at, um, local establishments. We've got the Rex, Social Coffee House, and also Old Town Pub, they're all going to do an after-parties. Um, and then on Sunday, uh, we have jazz brunches taking place at the Rex and, and, uh, Front Gorge and jazz-themed, uh, dance class at, um, Roots Up in Fitness. Uh, Shepherd's Old Field is gonna have live entertainment. Uh, we have, uh, Social is gonna be doing a jazz-era theme movie screening and a cocktail party. Uh, and the Art Council's gonna do a, um, art showing all along and they're gonna do an art share, a jazz-themed art share. And North End Gallery is gonna be doing a jazz-themed, um, showing as well. So a lot of exciting things happening in town.
Speaking of the Jazz Festival, Tony was saying it draws six hundred people to the festival? On a one-day, for just the one-day Jazz Festival?
Right, well, they have, um, the potential of, um, for up to eight hundred, uh, plus VIP, um, as well.
Right, but that plus, right, so, you know, making it a full weekend will probably draw more people and draw them to dat- to town rather than St. Clement's Island Museum, so...
Right, and we're working with, uh, the St. Mary's, um, and the, um, Maryland State, uh, Office of Tourism, uh, to actually expand on that. They're gonna be doing a lot of advertising in, um, the DC area. It's a bit strong jazz following, people travel for jazz festivals and concerts, so, um, they're really reaching, trying to reach out to that audience and bring them here to the festival and to the town for the whole weekend.
Well, that's, it'd be nice, hopefully it'll be open by then, so...
They're selling packaged tickets, um, in advance and, um, hopefully the hotel will get back going.
Yeah. Thank you, Brandy. Anything else, Tyler?
No, that's it.
Uh, Hayden, Community Development?
I just wanted to thank Jade for her report. Looks like we've had plus than twenty U and O's, um, use and occupancy permits that have come through on some of the building projects and, um, uh, new homes and businesses, so thank you for all you do and updating us with all the reports.
It looks like, just driving through Clark's Rest, there's about twenty homes under construction right now. Yeah. And, um, has anybody had a chance to go over the Brew Garden yet at, uh, Shepherd's Old Field? That, that's gonna be a nice addition.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool, please.
Yep. Okay, Christie, uh...
Um, I really don't have anything other than we're, as everybody knows, we're working on the, um, upgrade at the treatment plant, so...
We had just a little meeting, yeah.
A lot of, a lot of spreadsheets, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
Yeah, attended the, uh, Maryland Municipal League, um, Board Meeting and Retreat. That was January twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, um, that was held in Rockville. Had a good turnout, good time to network and see everyone. Also, we had a good discussion on the, um, the opening crisis, again, that was brought up. Also, everyone had the opportunity to become certified in Arcan, so we had someone there from their health department, so it was good for everyone to have. Also, Mayor Newton, who's also the MML president, and her husband, they hosted dinner for everyone at their house. So I thank them for their hospitality, it's very nice, their house was, uh, packed with an entire, uh, MML group. Um, this is Saturday, the twenty-sixth, of course, is our Board of Directors meeting. And our next Southern Maryland Municipal Association meeting is March thirteenth. And as far as we know, Terry, it is in La Plata, not North Beach, is that right? In La Plata? Okay, all right, and that's all I have, thank you.
But speaking of MML and, you know, the summer conference coming up in June, uh, with you being on the board and I'm gonna be Maryland Mayors Association President coming up in June, so kinda got, that came on kinda quick. I'd gotten on the board and then when Bruce Morrison got sick and the person was supposed to step up from there, didn't win her reelection, so they put me on as first Vice President and so the next step is President as of July, so... My point is, you know, being involved with MML, I think we probably should do the Main Street booth during the, uh, summer conference.
I would, I would like to have that back, so it'd be great.
So, just, um, if everyone's agreement with that. You know, when you get a chance, if you could, you know, if you're not in class or doing other things, just be at the booth to greet people as they come by. We'll all just take turns doing that, so... And, uh, Michelle and Tommy will be there and Tommy loves to, uh, be there, so...
He's done a good job before.
He does, yeah. Anything else, Jay?
That's all I have, Leonard Town is obviously represented well, so...
Yep, um, Larry, Business Development and Retention?
Okay, well, I went to the Brew Garden this weekend and, uh, I think I was there about eight o'clock, um, on Saturday night, it was packed. So that was really nice to see, it was a nice turnout and, um, what, eighteen beers on tap, or something like that? It was, it was good, so I'm glad to see that. And I'm also on the Leonard Town, um, Marketing Committee and one of the things that they wanted me to bring to you was an electronic, we're looking at doing like an electronic marquee in downtown Leonard Town. We've got those maps that are, um, in Leonard Town, but they're old, they've, you still got the Cafe D'Artiste on them. And so to constantly continuously print out a new map and have it replaced every time a business goes in and out is becoming, I think, time-consuming and kind of, um, you know, it's getting bogged down. You know, we're, we're not getting, getting updated as fast as the businesses are moving in and out. So if we did something, it would be like an electronic marquee, that would be kind of like a giant iPad, maybe if you will, not something that's neon, big flashing lights, but it would be something that we could very, very quickly update the businesses and when the businesses come in, it would also have, um, like, an updated calendar of events in the town, so you could have something like, you know, here's Earth Day, here's everything that's going on at different times, you know, that could be updated very easily. It would also, could have the menus, you know, from some of the restaurants, something that people could look at very quickly. Where do I want to eat, where do I want to go? So I don't know where to go with this, um, but I think Michelle had said that there was probably grants available to help pay for this and, um...
Well, the biggest issue was we do not allow electronic signs downtown, but this is more of a marquee. It's not like the normal electronic signs, it's only allowed on Route Five. So I think, um, we can certainly, I mean, I think it's something the LBA would pursue, uh, but we can help with looking for grants possibly. Um, I, I'm not sure what's available, but it's certainly something we can look at. Um, but I think, first of all, we need to decide, is this meet the criteria? It's not, it's more of a kiosk, it's not an electronic sign, like the flashing signs.
Is there a way we could partner with, um, the colleges sign that they already have up there to have LBA events listed there?
Um, they will not, um, they only do college events on that sign.
They just get caught up in everyone wanting to use it if they allow.
And this is more at the locations where we have the, the static signs now. There's three of them, one at the library, one at the, um, Antique Center and one downtown. So the people can see what businesses are available, um, look at a map. Um, like Mary said, if we had something that was more of a kiosk, they might be able to look at menus and, um, it could be, uh, updated more frequently.
Could it be part of our, um, so our strategic plan had the, um, branding and informational signs? Could it be something that could be part of...
You know, that might be something that's a recommendation, um, and I'm, I'm hoping to actually package, um, some type of a grant for the whole signage, so it might be something we could include in that whole, whole package.
I think, you know, even with, with doing like a, an electronic-type marquee like this, you know, we don't have to wait to get the approve, to get the new updated town logo or anything like that, because it's electronic. You know, we get a new logo, we just put it up there, we want it to be in the Leonard Town colors or whatever we want. You know, that's, that's instant, which is the nice thing. And these things, now, I've done a little bit of research on them, you know, they're, they don't need to be hard-wired, they can be solar-powered, they're, they're super, super thin, it's not like it's a, you know, big boxy thing sitting out there. You know, it can have the weather running across the top of the screen, it can have stock reports, I don't know, whatever we want running across the bottom. So it'd be something that would be really interactive and, you know, we, we do have to reach, I think, a little bit more into the twenty-first century and, and be a little bit more modern and be able to... and, and be a little bit more modern and be able to, you know, people expect that, I think. You know, when we were at the conference back in June, they talked about, um, which, which town was it that was all electronic that had gone, that was a big thing? Green Belt, I think, up there. So I think that's part of probably the next, the wave that we want to go.
Yeah, I mean, you could have a, you know, a, a pad, you know, where it shows the map and they could click, hit on it, similar to what ARAM has done for us on the website. You know, just, just have a computer screen there and they can click on, find out whatever they want to do there, so it's.
It'd just make it a little more updated than our, you know, little box out there with papers that are stuck up there, you know, something a little more current, doesn't get so faded. So I don't, I don't know where to go from here with that, but I can take that back to the Marketing Committee and say that we're open to it, is that, is everybody open to it?
Well, I, 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 I'm not sure I'd be open to a big sign that's, you know, the marquee, flashing signs, but, yeah, some kind of a, you know, small thing where, again, a, a map of the town and showing the businesses and they click, click on that and they can find out all the information.
We could probably put one down at the, I mean, depending on the, the cost, we could probably put one at the Wharf, you know, where the people are coming up under that overhang there, one outside the town office door, I don't know.
Yeah.
We might go spread them out a little bit, too.
Um, speaking of, um, of tourist information, is, do you have anything recent on the, the, the old jail museum? What's, what's the latest with that, Chris?
I think they cut the commission, they're gonna approve, you know, did they just do it the last time? They're approving the lease.
A lease with?
They're doing the lease.
They're doing the lease.
With the Historical Society?
Correct.
Okay.
That one before the commissioner on Tuesday.
Right, okay, so.
I think we have requested additional days that it would be open.
Okay.
Wednesday through Sunday, but I don't think they're able to do that.
Okay.
So.
Some equipment, I think, was also part of the renewal?
Yeah.
In terms of the, um, computer and the printer, I believe, and, uh, it's an item, a, a listing of equipment that was requested by the Historical Society.
Right, we're gonna continue to work with them, because our feeling is that this calls a visitor center, it should, people should expect it to be open reasonably in their hours, so I think they're, two days a week may be just a couple hours.
Right, right.
So I think people get disappointed, they see visitors, they send it, we go there, close, close, close.
So you're working with them to try to get it open more, that's, that's really where I was going with this.
Yeah, they're having some changes in their administration, I think, so I think there's not many for us down the road to, just at that point.
Okay, right. Mary, anything else?
Uh, that's, that's all I have, so should we continue to work, pursue this, or?
I think if we can, we can research more ideas and what it actually looks like and, and then make it, you know, like you said, part of the grant package. We don't have the funding at this point and, and the soonest it would be in the, if we budgeted for it, um, but I would like to really try to get a whole, a grant that would cover lots of different signage and the way finding.
Yeah, okay.
So I think if you can maybe pass on what you've researched or.
Sure, sounds good. Nope, I'm done then.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.